Ah, okay. I'm calling the December thirteenth Planning Commission to order after a slight technical delay. Jenna, could you do the roll call attendance and the declaration of the posting?
Thank you, Chair Mueller. Start with the roll call. Okay, we have Chair Mueller.
Here.
Commissioners Tonda.
Here.
Habib.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Kumar.
Here.
And Wilson is absent.
Right.
Tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code Section 54954.2.
Thank you. Commissioner Lake, could you lead us in the flag, please?
Stand and face the flag. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan's Federation of Liberty and Justice.
Okay. Now we'll go to open public comment. Members of the public are entitled to address the Planning Commission concerning any item within the Morgan Hill Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The Commission is prohibited from discussing or taking any action on an item not appearing on the posted agenda. Jenna, could you please tell people how they can make public comment?
Thank you, Chair Mueller. If you're joining us today using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're calling in using your phone, you can use the raise hand feature by dialing star nine and then dialing star six. You may also send us a comment by emailing us at PCpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov. Each speaker will receive three minutes. If you wish to speak on behalf of someone else, you will receive one additional minute per speaker. If you are speaking on behalf of four or more people, your comments will be limited to a total of seven minutes. Please make sure to state each person's name for the record. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody wishing to make a comment to the Planning Commission? Jenna, do we have anybody online?
Are no raised hands.
Are no raised hands, therefore I will close.
We do have one.
You have one?
Yes. Amisa Trillo?
Amisa.
Hi.
Hello.
Do you have a comment you'd like to address the Commission with?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Do you like to address the Commission with any comments or questions?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other hands?
No other hands.
Okay, I see nobody coming forward, so I'll close the open public comment and move on to orders of the day. Is there any reason to change the order?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with the way it is. The consent calendar consists of two Planning Commission minutes.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve?
Back then.
I have a motion and a second.
I'll have to split my vote. I don't feel comfortable voting on minutes where I wasn't present, and I wasn't present at the first meeting.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna stand on that one. Jenna, could you call the roll, please?
Chair Mueller?
Yes.
Commissioners Tonda?
As I previously mentioned, I'll be splitting my vote in abstention on the first item and I on the second.
Thank you. Commissioners Habib?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Wilson? Oh, sorry, he's absent. Kumar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes.
The first item, five with one abstention, one absent, and then the second one, six with one absent.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the first of our public hearings, which is Monterey City Ventures. And I need to report that I met with the applicant prior to the meeting.
I would also like to report I did meet with the applicant prior to the meeting.
Okay. And with that, as we go into the staff report, let's let the staff complete their full report before we ask any questions. And tonight's meeting is only about the general plan change and the zoning change, nothing else. Okay? Okay? With that, Joey, you're on.
Meeting Commissioners, Joey Din here with the Planning Department. May represent to you the first and only item on tonight's agenda. It's for a general plan and zoning amendment, so GPA 2021-0005 and ZA 2021-005 Monterey City Ventures, also referred to as the Gates. So the project is located, it's a project site, it's approximately three-point acre vacant property. It's looking on the west side of Monterey and south of Cochrane Road. Adjacent to it is the Arco Gas Station, Car Wash, and also Convenience Mart. And also there is a commercial building with a existing Starbucks with the drive-through and also a hair salon. So some of the surrounding land uses to the north, like I said, you have the Starbucks, the Arco. To the south, you actually have more mixed-use flex development, another project called the Monterey Gateway Mixed Use Project. To the east, you have residential attached medium density with the Midtown Plaza subdivision. And then to the west, you have residential detached medium density, so single-family detached homes, and also El Toro Fire Station. So for the project history, in 2002, the city council approved ordinance 1549, this approved and established the Gateway Center PUD or PD. This PD included the four parcels, these are the four parcels highlighted in red that you kind of, you see in the image. So the parcel one, which is the northernmost parcel, that is the Arco Gas Station and PM and also Car Wash. Parcel two, directly below that, has the commercial building with the hair salon and Starbucks drive-through. Parcels three and four, those are the larger pieces to the south, and those are the ones that are green, so they are currently undeveloped and vacant. Those are the subject parcels. In the PD, they were designated for multi-tenant commercial building for retail restaurants and also an office building. The city has received numerous inquiries over the years, but nothing ever really materialized due to site layout issues, potential flooding issues, because Fisher Creek is nearby. And also the property, majority of the property is located in FEMA flood zone AH. So in your packet, there was a letter of support that was provided by Scott Schilling. He was the former VP of Silicon Valley Developers Incorporated, and they were the original developers of the Gateway Center PD. Basically, this letter just kind of details some of those challenges that I kind of previously mentioned, and also the difficulty of finding potential buyers and developers to build out the parcels as they were originally planned. So the project is requesting a general plan amendment and also zoning amendment. So the existing general plan is designated as commercial. The existing zoning is general commercial and also the PD. And they are proposing a general plan amendment and a zoning amendment to change both the general plan and zoning to mixed-use flex. So the Planning Commission in January, there was a preliminary Planning Commission meeting in January where the applicant took in preliminary comments on the proposed general plan and zoning amendment, after which the applicant worked with city staff, kind of refined the project, also changed the site layout to kind of better address some of the concerns that were raised. Some of those concerns was centered around, the previous site plan had the main right-of-way and also access driveway to the property, kind of going along the middle of the property like this. That was like the previous site layout. And so taking in some of the comments and concerns from that previous preliminary meeting, they changed that layout, moved everything to the western portion, so that's where the main the main right-of-way and onsite circulation and driveway will be on the western side. This kind of also helps a couple of other issues that were raised. There was concern about abetting residential directly adjacent to the Starbucks drive-through. And so now there is a little bit more of a separation with that right-of-way. Oops. Then also there was a desire to kind of accentuate the commercial spaces that was kind of running along Monterey. As this is identified as one of the surround, adjacent to one of the major gateways of the city, since it's directly south of the intersection of Monterey Road and Cochrane Road. So with the change in the layout, they were actually, the applicant was actually able to add a third commercial unit and then kind of emphasize the outdoor space and also kind of just the street frontage along Monterey Road. So this site plan was the one that was analyzed during the Sequel process. However, like Commissioner Mueller previously mentioned, the only applications that is being, that is up for review tonight is the general plan amendment, the zoning amendment, and the environment for the Sequel. So some of the policy considerations, does the proposed general plan amendment meet the intent of the general plan goals and policies? Can the findings of approval of a zoning map amendment be made? And does the subject properties from the existing PD require a public benefit? So these are, the next few slides are some of the general plan policy and singles that the project was found to be consistent with. So just a brief summary, the project site is a vacant infill site surrounded by existing developments, so it's adjacent to Monterey Road. There are, so there are easy and accessible connections to existing infrastructure and utilities. The project will is proposing to build single-family attached townhome-style condominiums. So that's what will be added to the city's housing supply if the project moves forward. The proposed density of the project is approximately 12.84 units per acre. Staff feels that this is appropriate since it kind of feathers more from the single-family detached along the western side of the property, and then kind of as you move closer to Monterey, you get more of the single-family attached, especially along down Monterey, you kind of see those developments popping up now or being built. And then as you continue further on, it kind of funnels more into the dense urban environment of downtown Morgan Hill to the south. So lastly, the mixed-use project would add residential and commercial along to Monterey. It's within a relatively close proximity to downtown Morgan Hill. I believe it's about just under a mile to downtown Morgan Hill, so there are opportunities to walk and bike if that is desired. And there are, there are existing facilities, there is the, there are existing sidewalks. The project frontage will construct a sidewalk that would connect to the existing sidewalk system, and there is an existing bike lane along Monterey as well. So consistency with the zoning standards, I know this might be a little hard to read, it might be a little blurry, and I apologize for that, the table is just really tall. So basically, it's just showing you that these are the development standards in the mixed-use flex zone district. So if the zoning amendment were to be approved, the proposed project as they were, as they proposed it, would meet all the development standards in the mixed-use flex zone district. And then for the discussion for the substantial public benefit, so typically according to Morgan Hill Municipal Code 183050 H8, when you form a new what are more, typically you would require substantial public benefit when you rezone as a new plan development. So the way that staff kind of interpreted that was when a PD amendment is not forming a new PD master plan, they're not asking any extra or extraordinary development standards, they're actually asking to just revert to the base or to a new zone district. So to staff's interpretation, you wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to provide a substantial public benefit to pull themselves out of that existing PD. But staff also kind of took a step further. We looked at the original formation of the gateway PD, just to kind of make sure there was no net loss of public benefits. It was formed back in 2002, so back then there was no requirements for any substantial public benefit. So the general plan findings of approval, does the general plan and land use designation amendment meet letter and intent? The proposed project could be found consistent with the policies in the general plan and also the proposed general plan designation of mixed-use flex. These are the zoning amendment findings. So again, the proposed project is found to be consistent with the general plan. The development is a mixed-use project that would provide housing and commercial opportunities. The proposed project is not expected to be detrimental to public insurance, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. There was a, there is an initial study and mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project through the California Environmental Quality Act. And as a result, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared for all of the mitigation measures that were identified to reduce the project's impacts to, but to less than significant levels. And then lastly, the amendment would allow for the development of mixed-use of a mixed-use project. There is, the site, project site is large enough for the proposed project, it still meets all the other development standards, and it would be complimentary to some of the other residential mixed-use projects that you kind of see along Monterey Road. So I wanted to touch briefly on Sequel. So like I said, initial study and MND was prepared for the project and mitigation monitor was prepared for the project. In that initial study, there were areas of concern that were raised. These were around biological resources, geology, hydrology, noise, greenhouse gases, and then hazards. Or sorry, hazardous materials. All of these were identified in the initial study and mitigation measures were identified to reduce those to less than significant levels. The city did receive a letter from Santa Clara Valley Water District yesterday, so December 12th. In this letter, there were minor corrections that were recommended on the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. These kind of centered around corrections regarding the description of the existing and proposed drainage systems for the project. And so in addition, there was also an update to the hazard mitigation measure that the city made, so that the basically the change made it so that the city would actually be the lead agency with the monitoring responsibility to kind of follow through on the hazard mitigation as since the parcels within the city jurisdiction. So because of those changes, an errata and an updated version of the MMRP has been prepared. So with that, staff recommends Planning Commission open and close the public hearing. Adapt a resolution recommending the city council adopt mitigated negative declaration with the errata and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project, and also adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the amendments to the general plan, land use designation, and the zoning map. So with that, staff is available for any questions. I believe the applicant is also here, and they also has prepared a short presentation, so we will all be ready for any questions.
So I want clarifying questions, not discussions, so that we're only getting clarifying questions before we go through the rest of the public area. Commissioner Downing?
Hey Joey. You mentioned about the compliance, so about walking and biking, right? You said that there's an existing bike lane. I'm not sure there is, but maybe there is. And two, with the railway bridge, how do you, we're gonna, there's gonna be, so the residents are gonna be able to walk out of that exit, which is the one coming on to Monterey there, and on their side, there's gonna be a pathway? There's gonna be like a walkway for them to walk downtown? How does that work? Because it's a long ways down to old Monterey, right? Before we meet anything like a pavement?
Yeah, so there is, along the project frontage, they would be constructing sidewalks that would connect with any existing sidewalk facilities. They can walk south, or they can also walk north to Cochrane and cross the street that way.
What happens when you get to the end of the site on the right-hand side? Let's say you come, the site stops just after the railway underpass, right? But you still have a long ways to get to Monterey, to old Monterey and Monterey before you come to a walkable pavement. What happens then? So what, does it go all the way down?
So they would, the applicant would only be required to construct the sidewalks along their project frontage.
Oh, what happens then? You stop? How do you get across, what do you do then?
So I guess pedestrians would just need to.
As a pedestrian, what do you do?
Walk north, cross Cochrane and cross the street.
You can't really go south, walking. You have to go north, to Cochrane, to the traffic light, cross the cross, and go down the other side of the street. Is that the idea?
That is an option, yes.
Like, how would you deem that to be okay then? You're saying that there's gonna be a walkway, but the walkway doesn't go anywhere.
There is, there is a pedestrian path towards downtown.
On the other side of the street?
Correct.
You were saying that it was compliant because they were building a pathway to go downtown on the right side of the street, but they're not. They're just building it to the end of their.
Correct, that is correct. They would only be building the sidewalk facility along their project frontage.
And so you cannot get downtown then, on the right-hand side?
Okay. I think he's tried to answer the question, I think. How you do it on the side of Monterey that's closest to the project is a little bit in question. You may have to go to Cochrane and then walk down.
That's what I'm saying, but you had mentioned in your presentation that that it was compliant because they were building a walkway out of the property to downtown, but they're really not. They're just building a walkway a few hundred meters down, and then it stops, right?
Right, so I mentioned in my presentation that they would be building a walkway along, building a, the sidewalk, completing the sidewalk along their project finish that would connect to any existing facilities.
But it won't connect anything. Okay, it's okay, it won't connect.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one more.
Okay.
Can you, sorry, I didn't fully follow the, sorry, it was slide. Sorry, lost it now, one second. It was. You said that they didn't have to have, to change, you said that you, staff had assessed that there wasn't a public benefit required? I didn't really follow that whole story. Could you explain that again, maybe, so we can?
Sure, so in staff's interpretation of the municipal code, a project would require a one or more substantial public benefit if it is to be rezoned as a plan development. They're not proposing to be rezoned as a plan development, they're proposing to pull themselves out of one.
Okay, so they want to come out of the plan development?
Correct.
Okay, and what is the requirement for that? Nothing?
It's simply a rezon. And, right, and what Joey found when he did research was the original PD was done before we required public benefits to create the PD as a whole. So there's nothing that we're losing, and pulling out the property doesn't affect any public benefit because there was not one for the original PD.
Going in in the first place?
Correct.
Okay, okay, now I understand, okay. Okay?
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go to open public comment, or public comment on this item. Jenna, could you tell them how, and then call them?
Thank you, Chair Mueller. If you're joining us today using Zoom, feel free to send us a comment. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand by dialing, use the raise hand feature. If you're calling in using your phone, dial star nine and then dial star six. You can also send us an email at PCpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody wishing? Okay. Well, usually before we do that, let me ask this applicant to give their presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, Jenna shut me out. Okay. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Samantha Hauser, I'm from City Ventures, and I'm so grateful for your time to talk about this project on Monterey. I think most of you know us, but I'll talk a little bit about City Ventures before I start. We are an infill developer, we're also a sustainable developer, so we do things like solar, electric, we do Nest thermostats, EV charging in every single one of our homes. We do low-impact landscaping, local water fixtures. We design creatively to use less lumber, greener concrete mixes, and you know, things like solar battery backup. I could go on, but I think it's important to highlight it because in the context of our current climate, I think it's important that we leave behind a project that people can feel good about. As infill developers, all of our projects look a little bit different, but I'm going to highlight the ones that we've done in Morgan Hill. I think this is our seventh project with the city, and this will be our third mixed-use project if it moves forward. So a little bit about, of context about the site, it's about a mile from downtown, as staff mentioned. It's also less than a quarter of a mile from both local and regional bus stops. The thing that's very unique about this site is it's surrounded by development, there's infrastructure that runs through it, but it's historically vacant. There's never been a structure built on this site. And I think one of the reasons this has happened is because this has been a challenging site. There have been a lot of title issues and encumbrances, and there's still easements that are gonna be on the site in perpetuity, even though we've solved for the majority of the encumbrances. I think that really lends itself to the kind of vibrant designation of the mixed-use flex, which provides flexibility to design a thoughtful site, but also still respect the fact that there are easements that run through here. And so we're here tonight to respectfully request a rezon and a general plan amendment to the mixed-use flex designation. We've worked really closely with staff to kind of figure out what the appropriate density is here, look at density feathering as we move further away from downtown. We've spent a lot of time looking at how to get a lot of open space, so the requirement for this site is 25,000 square feet. Our central open space is 28,000 square feet, and there is 41,000 square feet of passive open space on the south, which I'll speak to more on future slides. We've also looked at providing a lot of open space that's privately used. We understand that people are really working a lot from home now. We want this to be really livable, we want the homes to feel warm and welcoming, and parking the site to either meet or exceed the city's code requirements, which I think is important in this location. So the site plan that's before you right now is not the plan that we're proposing. This is the plan that we brought before you in January. We got a really, a lot of different types of feedback from you in January, which we really appreciated. I'm gonna highlight the three things that we spoke most about. The first was this kind of commercial that was orphaned from parking that was on the north portion of the site. We also spent a long time talking about how we had aligned the entry to the site from Jarvis, and how there was a concern that that would create a funneling issue on Monterey, as well as create an unintentional opportunity for people to use our site to queue into the Starbucks drive-through, which was not what our intention was. And then I think everyone liked the idea of the central open space, but the fact that it was next to the project entry and kind of more part of the vehicular travelway was, was an issue. So as staff kind of presented, we really worked to kind of think about how we could reorganize the site around all of the principles that you identified. I think the most important of those was realigning the project entry. We worked really closely with Scott Clear and with staff. We hired our own traffic consultant, the city hired another traffic consultant. We really analyzed this to make sure that we weren't creating an issue, we wanted to complement the uses on Monterey. So there is an acceleration lane that would be proposed, and this also obviates the ability for people to queue into the Starbucks drive-through. Reorganizing the site also allowed us to add more commercial spaces to really front along Monterey. We want them to be vibrant and flexible, so these are five different commercial spaces, but they're both combinable and demizable. We would design them so that all of the infrastructure for food use Um, we would design them so that all of the infrastructure for food uses or higher infrastructure uses would already be in place. We've created a um commercial parking area that is directly next to the commercial space. And then we created a plaza that is specifically envisioned for if a restaurant comes having outdoor dining. And then reorganizing the site also allowed us to um really capitalize on the central area. It increased in size. And I'll talk about some of the amenities that are envisioned here on future slides. And then along Monterey, um we've really focused on having entries that envision or that embrace the corridor. Um, and so instead of siding on Monterey or having a fence there, we've activated it by having all of our front doors along Monterey. And then this this active, um I'm sorry, this passive open space to the south before, we didn't really do much with it. But here we're conceiving of a lot of lush landscaping. We've put a walking path around it and some benches. And so we think that this is going to be a really vibrant site if it moves forward. Um, I want to focus a little bit on something that um Commissioners Tonda and Chair Mueller said to us at the study session, which is. Um, with the right in right out entry, we wanted to avoid having people driving south on Monterey to make a U-turn at Old Monterey. So we worked really closely with the title company. We went through decades of documents. And we've confirmed that we do have access to Cochran for the site. So I think that's a big deal. It's something I want to underscore. And I think it really kind of changes um the way we contemplated how this would work. We would still have the entry on Monterey be um our kind of main grand entry. Um, the organizing principles throughout this are taken both from our experience with RDCS as well as your current objective standards. Looking at varying home sizes and layouts, having the central open space, figuring out amenities for different age groups. These are things that we incorporated into the vision for the site. And then something that Commissioner Downey has kind of taught me, um which I've taken into a lot of other projects throughout the Bay Area. Is um making sure that you can access all of your open spaces uh from front doors without having to cross the street or have the vehicular travel way. So every home on this project can access both the central open space and the southern open space without having to cross the street. Um, I'm a mother of young kids and I understand the thought process behind that. We also will create um decorative paving areas to give people shortcuts if they don't want to take the long way around. And then I know that we have to go through an SDR process, so this is all conceptual, but I did want to touch on what we're thinking as far as the architecture. Um, we're looking at organic materials with a lot of articulation and different roof elements. Um, for the uh the retail building along Monterey, we wanted to have large storefront windows and signage that kind of harkens over to the design styles in downtown to really create that connectivity. And then I'm just going to end with um some of the amenities uh in the open space. So we're looking at um outdoor seating areas, bocce ball, outdoor dining and barbecue, um fire tables, sporting lawns. Um, passive and active open spaces, places to read and sit under trees. And then um children's play areas and we're looking at kind of organic materials that aren't, you know, bright yellow. So with that, we're just so grateful for your time. I'm here to answer any and all of your questions and I appreciate. All of the help that the commission and staff has given us over the past year and a half. Um, it's not lost on me that. This is a really wonderful place to be and we're so excited that our potential seventh project. So thank you.
Okay, uh, do we have questions for the applicants? And we're focused on the general plan change and the zoning change.
Uh, I think I do, Joe.
Okay.
Um. Uh, I I I think you could probably be in the best position to answer at least some of these questions.
Sure.
And they have to do with the zoning amendment finding. Finding number three, that the effect of site is physically suitable in terms of design, location, shape, size and other characteristics to ensure that. Blah, blah, blah. They contribute to the safety of the surrounding properties. And by that, I mean the property immediately to the north, the adjacent commercial property. Um, I have two kind of sets of questions. Uh, you partially answered the first, and that is what right do you have to go through that? Uh, property and it sounds like you have some type of easement.
Yes, there are three different easements that um the title company has ensured that comprise access over to Cochran.
Okay, great. The second one then, uh, if you could imagine uh these uh. Residential units and the commercials that were successful as they try to go north, they'll be going through that easement. And as people do, they sometimes speed, especially if you're trying to get up to the Cochran intersection to catch a light. Um. It's a little bit different than what we have in our our shopping centers where people also, there's a lot of cars going down uh aisles. As they uh attempt to act uh exit the uh property that they're parking in. This one is actually you're you're exiting from your home. It's in the morning. You're going to the north. You may be uh, you know, going twenty five, thirty five miles an hour, which is okay on that section, except where you have. And in fact, could you uh pull up that one document that showed the uh?
Yes.
Yeah, the parking and the uh.
Which one?
Travelway path.
Is this, is this the one you're speaking of, Commissioner?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, uh, for everyone on the lower right, as they're exiting out of the uh site. In the morning, they're trying to get to Cochran to uh catch a signal. Uh, they would be going through the aisle way that is shown on the bottom. And kind of connecting up and going down as you've shown in that travel path. And the the first group that they would sort of have conflicts with. Are the Starbucks people who are parked there. I've parked there before. And right now it's a very quiet area because there's nobody going through, but people will be going through here in the morning in in the future. And it's a back out parking. I don't particularly like it, however, that's very typical for all of our commercial areas. The concern is where you have to make a jog. And um and cars may really be accelerating and they could be accelerating going back in the opposite direction from left to right. And uh, something that I'm not terribly fond of, that would be appropriate on private property, would be some type of speed control. On that property to the north. So you don't have control over it. But I think it may be something that the uh. Uh, the users of that parking area would really. Benefit from.
Yeah, I I appreciate the question. Um, and while I'm not a traffic engineer, um, we did have two different engineers analyze this. I think one thing that um. Is uh an interesting point here because I like this idea of adding a speed bump. Is we actually own more than half the Starbucks parking lot, so we could build one right in here to slow people down. And I think that that's something that we would be happy to do.
Okay, well, whatever would be uh appropriate. That's all private property. And the uh, I guess the city would not really have liability on that, but. Uh, we certainly don't want anybody to get hurt.
We we want it to be safe, too.
The the second thing is the um, the commercial sites. You have four, five. Relatively small buildings that will be for commercial and everybody sort of likes that mixed use uh, correct, over there on the left. Yeah, those right there. And the frontage would be on Monterey, so people would go by and see the dog grooming or whatever it happens to be and say, gee, I'd like to go there. And so when they go there, uh, I was trying to find out where they park. And it, and do you have a parking plan where they would park and it's reserved for them?
Yes.
Okay, and could you describe what that would be?
Absolutely. And so that was, I think, um, I think that was your comment in January. And so that was one of the things that we've specifically gone back and changed. So um, we've added a parking lot right here next to, and I'll. Just get back to it. So we've added this parking lot here in blue. Um, it would be striped specifically for the commercial um uses. And then we would allow the commercial people to park in any of the parking spaces throughout the site, but the residential parking would not be allowed in that parking lot adjacent to the commercial uses.
Okay. Good, very good. Um, those are my questions. Thank you very much. And I, again, this helped uh clarify this finding. Uh, regarding physical suitability, uh, even though I don't know if it was designed to allow me to go into weeds like this, but uh. You did a good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have a question of the applicant? Okay, I'm gonna have a point order. Back to live meetings. Are we using speaker cards? Does council use speaker cards?
I I don't know if council is, but we can use speaker cards, yes.
Okay, uh, when we were back to just normal in-person meetings, we had speaker cards. So I'd like to ask anyone who wants to speak tonight to fill one out, if you would, please. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, since we don't have one, if you have a speaker, please identify yourself. We don't need to fill it out now.
There's, I see, I just have a question regarding the PowerPoint that you showed. Uh, it was about the California air quality amendment. I'm just wondering why greenhouse gas emissions and biological resources are a concern?
Uh, Joey, can you answer that rush?
Sure.
I go sit down now?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I can, let me break, sorry, I need to pull up my notes. So in the um, so for the California Environmental Quality Act, there were, there were several areas concerned, one of which was the bio. Biological resources and greenhouse gases. So for the biological resources, um, there were several I um, uh wildlife. Um, identified that could potentially be on the site, not necessarily that they were their own, but their their habitats could potentially be on the site. So because there is a potential, there is a potential for concern. And so one of the mitigation measures would be if they were to. Develop during a specific season that's known for breeding of those specific wildlife for plant species to occur on the site, then. There has to be pre-construction surveys done um so that we ensure that um no species would be taken without um, without um. Without mitigation. Um, additionally, the applicant is also proposing to remove, I believe, eight trees. Um, and. Um, in Morgan Hill, we love our trees, and so that was also an area of concern. Um, they will be required to provide at least a one-to-one ratio, um, and this would be conditioned upon the project. Um, when the development permits move forward. Um. But at this time, the conceptual landscape plan that was included in the packet does show, I mean, well beyond more than eight. Eight uh mitigation trees. Um, additionally, there were small, um, several small onsite wetlands that were identified. Um, that could be classified as waters of the state by US Army Corps of Engineers or by um waters of the, I'm sorry, waters of the US by US Army Corps or waters of the state by regional water. Um. And so as a result, if if the um Army Corps or this the regional water decides to classify that. As waters of the US or state, uh, section four oh four and four oh one permits would be required and also. Um, any wetland mitigation fees um would be required to be paid um to Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency. Um, for greenhouse gases, um, there are potential, there is potential to generate moderate levels of greenhouse gases when you have new residential. Um, but this was um, some of the mitigation measures were already built into the project and what they're proposing. So for example, they're proposing to be all electric, so no gas infrastructure. Um, and that also includes the uh commercial units as well.
So just just to provide some further information, um, both biological resources and greenhouse gases are required parts of SEQA. The California Environmental Quality Act. So in any analysis, there's a whole list of things that have to be looked at, and those are just two of them. So Joey went into the the details, but asking why we even looked at them. It's just part of the part of SEQA.
Hey, is there anybody else wishing to speak?
There are no raised hands.
No raised hands, no speaker, so I will close the public comment. Um, does staff have any response to the one letter we received? I think we talked about a lot of it. That was the that mirror head letter.
The the one public comment received um regarding uh bike ped.
Yeah, the pedestrian.
Um, I I understand the the author's concerns and and. You know, the city is always striving to improve our bike ped facilities. There are, there are bike lanes in that area. They may not be um. They may not be separated, um, or class one lanes, but they do exist. Um, we are looking at. For our infill projects, they're responsible for building those sidewalk connections as far as they can. Um, in this case, you know, to build a sidewalk all the way through to the underpass, the underpass has to be widened. Um. As part of the upcoming transportation master plan, all of our transportation facilities, including bike and ped are going to be reviewed. And look for additional improvements to put on the list that will then focus, that will flow into a update to our circulation element.
Okay. Chair, if we could just, at least for the record, um, I'm not sure it's a big deal at the end of the day, but, you know. And the presentation, Joey, you said, I'm not picking any bridges. You'd say there's an existing bike lane. There really isn't. I bike there all the time. It's not a bike lane, right? And it certainly, if there is a bike lane, it stops halfway down the hill, right? And there is no, you may be able to build a little bit of a pedestrian walkway or or pathway, but it stops at the bridge. Right? So I think for the record, we should say, you know, it doesn't really comply. There is no bike lane there. And yes, the applicant is generously building a pathway for their portion, but it doesn't go anywhere. So if you really want to go downtown. You've got to go out by Starbucks, go to Cochran, cross over and go down. So let's be honest about it, right? That's what you're going to have to do. Right? You cannot go downtown on the, what is that? West, west side of the of Monterey.
And uh, if I could, technically you can. Technically, uh pedestrians can cross at the intersection with, what is it, Jarvis?
An intersection there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a two intersection there. And it um breaks up the two signalized intersections, so technically you can cross there. It's called an unmarked crosswalk. It's not terribly safe, but it's not illegal to cross there.
Where where is that?
That is uh Jarvis.
We bring up a map. Can you show us, Joey?
Yeah, just a site map or.
I was looking at the Google Maps earlier. I didn't see that.
Oh. On my laptop? Your HMI?
Want to try the um.
Wayne, sorry, Wayne, but I'm not trying to be picky, but there's a center median there. Right? You have to, you have to walk across that center median to get across. You're saying that's legal to walk across there?
Yes, okay, you can cross on any street other than a freeway or otherwise uh prohibited by signage backed up by regulation. Uh, wherever there is an intersection, except. Uh, between two signalized intersections. And so what that does is that creates, it's right there, Jarvis.
But.
Jarvis, that's an intersection. And you can cross there. Those are called unmarked crosswalks on on the uh. Uh, the right side or the east rilly side is actually marked, but the other ones just are unmarked. And the city has an option to either put in. Uh, marked or unmarked. You you normally don't put it in marked unless you want to pass there. We don't want them to pass there. If you really don't want them to pass through, you have to sign it. But I I'm just saying that, you know, most people won't. And actually, when you legally can. And when most people won't, that's almost the safest situation because um pedestrians, even though they have the right of way. Uh, they could have the right of way, they'll acquiesce and allow the car to go through and just kind of. Speed across or run across. That's what people do. So technically you could. You could cross there. Uh, many people would not, but uh I'll I'll be darned. Sometimes during the daytime, when there's no cars coming at all. Uh, people do that. They do that all the way up and down Monterey Road, uh, and actually it's legal.
Okay.
So.
Okay. But the other thing I think we need to understand is if, when this project was getting built. It fills in a gap. Right? And there's a, there's a gap there, but maybe in the future we'll fill it in or we will be able to fill. So while this project is developing, it does its portion of it. That's done all over the community. There's bike lanes that have gaps in them that we're working really hard to fill.
So, Chair, I'm not complaining about any of that. All I'm saying is, for the record, Joey said you can go downtown. You cannot. Right? So unless you could do this weird walk across three lanes and jump across a uh intersection, right? But I'm just saying, right, just for the record.
Okay. Uh, with that, let's go on to the discussion of the planning commission actions. The first action is to recommend to the city council they approve the mitigation negative declaration and the mitigation model during the reporting program. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion to say? Have a motion in a second. Jenna, would you call the roll?
I do have a comment or discussion or question for city staff. Um, so just based off, is my mic on? Um, just based off of the question that was brought up by the public speaker. Um, Joey, maybe this might be a better question for yourself. So I know you're mentioning briefly when it comes to biological resources. How, if there's the potential of certain species to be in that area. There should be a pre-um, construction survey conducted to determine whether those species are there and so on and so forth. Cause I think also in the. Uh, mitigated narrative declaration or some mentions of burning owls and so on and so forth. So along those same lines, um, in the general plan, I believe this is. Page two fifty-four of four oh eight. And there's a map that indicates known occurrences of special status species. And in that area, and where we have the proposed project, um, it does indicate. California tiger salamanders also being potentially there. I'm not sure if I saw that in um. In either than mitigated negative declaration or any other place in the, the packet. Is that something, given that there's a potential for those species to be. In the project area that possibly a pre-survey should be done prior to construction?
Um, yes, so that, that would um, be required to um, be submitted to the. Ultimately, we would have to submit all of our pre-construction surveys to the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency. Um, and have basically their blessing to have the project also move forward as well, since we are a partner agency with them and. They're basically, we both have to basically answer to um, California Fish and Wildlife together on projects like this. Um, what I will say for that is um, the, the. General plan um, map could have identified um. Potential habitats previously, um, but the, the habitats could, could have changed and. Um, that's why maybe the, I'm not, I, I can't, I can't tell you if the, if the biological report did not identify um. California tiger salamander species, but that could also be a reason for the discrepancy.
Got it. So it may not necessarily be, need to be included into the negative, I mean, the mitigated negative declaration. Within that, it's still kind of under the umbrella of um, further research or so on and so forth being done by the Santa Clara County Habitat. And I forgot the name that you had mentioned. Correct.
And I have the initial study pulled up and it said there was a September twenty twenty-one survey that did not identify any evidence of special status species. So there was a survey done. I think that the um, property is regularly mowed. And so there is no habitat that would support most of the, the species.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's all I had, Chair.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll go to the vote.
Chair Muller?
Yes.
Planning Commissioners Tonda?
Aye.
Habib?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Lake?
Aye.
Kumar?
Aye.
Motion passes uh, six with one absent.
Okay, now we move on to the general plan and zoning change. Any, any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
We have a motion in a second. Okay, any discussion? All right, Jenna, would you call the roll please?
Chair Muller?
Yes.
Commissioners Tonda?
Aye.
Habib?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Lake? And Kumar?
Aye.
Motion passes six with one absent.
Okay, thank you. With that, that completes this item. And we'll go on to our fourth item, which I mean, means is a legal brief. Yes. You want to take a five-minute break and do that? We'll take a five-minute break and do that.
Liam?
It's more you.
Okay, I'll call the planning commission back to order. And are you ready? Uh, those for people listening in or whatever, this is something that we have on occasional agendas. Where our legal counsel gives the planning permission, a review or a briefing on a new area of the law that has now become prominent for some reason. So please go ahead.
Awesome, your assistant for the attorney and forgot to turn the mic back on. I um decided to speak on the Brown Act tonight because there are some new changes going into effect on January first. So I'm going to give you kind of a brief overview of where the law stands now. What happened during the pandemic and the new law that will go into effect uh January first because it will affect your um attendance and your ability to teleconference. Some of them, the um the way the law stands now will provide us with more flexibility. So the Brown Act requires that meetings be open and public, public and that persons should be permitted to attend any meeting. Um except with some exceptions such as like closed session items, which is usually um litigation and uh real property negotiations for obvious reasons to allow those types of things to be discussed privately before a decision is made. And the planning commission is considered a legislative body as it is defined under the government code. But and I was kidding early about not asking questions. If you do have any questions during any portion of this, please feel free to interrupt me. I'm gonna go over some of these fairly quickly. Um so a meeting is a concreation of a majority of the members of the legislative body in the same time and place. And that includes um even when someone's teleconferencing at at this point. To hear, discuss, or deliberate, or take action on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So when is a meeting not a meeting? So generally, you are allowed to have individual contacts with uh staff and with members of the public as as some of you do occasionally meet with maybe applicants or other members of the public. That is allowed. The most important thing is that you don't then share that with the other commissioners, uh because then that could uh result in a violation of the Brown Act. Commissioners may also um attend things like conferences, community meetings, ceremonial award uh at events without violating the Brown Act as well, as long as you do not discuss the subject matter that is a part of your uh under your jurisdiction. So for example, if you all sit at the same table at an event and start talking about things, we will have a problem. Um be these types of things have happened many times, not here, but in general, this is why we have these laws. People would go to lunch, make decisions, discuss outside of of a notice public meeting. Briefly discuss the agenda requirements. So we are required to post an agenda seventy-two hours before the meeting. And the the purpose of the agenda is to inform members of the public about what you will be discussing. And the as we've discussed before, we cannot discuss or make decision on items that are not on the posted agendas. Are some requirements to the not discussing items on the agenda? You may provide brief responses to questions from the public. Clarify or reference to staff. Of announcements or reports on activities. A request for a future report and placement of items on a future agenda. So public participation, we must always allow time on an agenda for people to participate. They're not required to register. Uh rules of decorum are permitted. Time limits are okay, recording is okay. And we may not prohibit members of the public from criticizing us or our programs or services.
And time time limits? No minimums and maximums. It could be a little less thirty seconds, a minute. I mean, is there any, there's no legislation that says it has to be at least X.
No, no, that is up to us and we we have policies that that establish generally that um the mayor or the um chair of the commission will establish the time limits for public speaking.
Well, on at a given event, the chair can say for tonight, the limit is X.
Yeah.
Right? If there was like seventy-five people here, for example, you said.
Correct, and that had that does happen very frequently when we have large numbers that we will limit it to one minute. Yes.
Uh Cynthia, a quick question to you. So I know one of the things you just mentioned right now was that public agencies cannot prohibit public criticism. And I know one of, I I believe one of the commissioners bylaws. Um we tried to, I guess you could say discourage individuals from putting comments towards one individual on the dais or so on and so forth. Is that allowed or does that kind of get covered by commission bylaws?
We recommend that you all rules of decorum and and be respectful of each other, but we cannot prevent the public from criticizing us. So if someone wants to uh approach the dais and and criticize something that I've said or something that the commission's approved, we must allow those types of criticisms.
Got you. Okay, so i- in prior instances where we would, you know, have the speaker say, you know, can you please address the commission rather than individual? They can indeed continue to address individuals if they want to.
Public comment is addressing the commission, but they may comment on other items.
Got you.
Yes. And as and as commissioners, we do request that you treat each other respectfully.
Okay.
And I just wanted to mention that a slight difference between public comment versus public hearings. Um public comments is even if it is not a public hearing, the public still has the right to come and address you. And during the public hearing, we still, we also allow public comment in the public hearing context. Uh serial meetings are illegal and that's where uh we have a series of meetings. So for example, um Commissioner Mueller calls Commissioner Tonda, Commissioner Tonda then calls Commissioner Kumar, Commissioner Kumar then those are the types of serial meetings that are illegal because you're you're each communicating with each other. Or in another instance, I have a case um that I was gonna talk about. In this, in this instance, the uh city attorney acted as the spokesperson and that person contacted each and every council member to try to seek a consensus on an item and that was found to be a Brown Act violation. While in fact, not protected by the attorney-client privilege because there was no legal matter being discussed. And so that these are um the types of violations that can occur within a
Cynthia, can you go back one?
Yes, I just wanted to jump to this one because it kind of related to what I was talking about. This one?
Yeah. Uh no, the one more before it.
Yes.
The last two bullets, can you explain what those mean?
Right, it the current way that we um conduct ourselves, we often use emails, social media. It is recommended that you do not hit reply all or forward emails to the other commissioners because you have the potential to violate the Brown Act. Um you may be expressing an opinion or um providing information and outside of a notice public meeting, that raises to the the level of potential Brown Act violation. Um chat rooms, we recommend you stay away from them. Don't like another commissioner's post, particularly if it's something that is coming in front of you. So you know, if you have one commissioner who's maybe posting on an item that's going to be coming in front of you and one of you likes it, then we have um discussion outside of a notice public meeting. And so we discourage those kinds of behaviors because those are very risky and and easy to then end up in a violation of the Brown Act.
Thank you.
Cynthia, um I I I I'm certain I asked this question before, but it's the majority member. So this is a seven-member board. So three of us could technically get together and have a conversation about something and it's deemed a minority. Is that okay? Discouraged, encouraged?
It is discouraged.
Discouraged, but it's not, but you specifically say a majority of the members.
Correct.
But Lewis discouraged, it's not a violation of the Brown Act, or is?
Correct, it would have to be a a majority.
Okay, but it's very difficult to make sure that nobody accidentally goes over that limit and goes to four. The city of San Jose in particular got in trouble because somebody sent an email that one less than majority had talked about and they sent it to another member and they had to go back.
Okay.
And when the the remedy can be very painful.
Yeah, yes.
There's also posting requirements. If it's a majority, like let's say four members go to a conference. There might be a need to post that you are all at this conference together. Um relates back to having any potential discussion or does it rise to the level of a meeting?
Right, because it's a three of you meet at lunch and talk about something that's coming before you. And then one of you goes and talks to another one, then we have four.
Or somebody has talked to one that's not there and you'd have a majority. So you'd have to first ask that nobody's talked to anybody else because then you'd go over the limit.
It it seems like i- it's better to even avoid the appearance of having a potential breach of the the Brown Act, right?
That is my
You see three of us together having lunch and they they make construe that we're having like a cabal site or something like that.
And I may have a slide on this later, e- even say, for example, you, all of you want to attend a city council meeting because you're interested in something that's there. We recommend that you don't sit together. It's not illegal for you to sit together. It is the appearance of of a potential violation or appearance of impropriety um that you may be discussing the item.
And Cynthia, what what are the implications should that happen?
That's on the, actually on the last slide, um the potential for criminal prosecution and the action you, um that's that's the most severe result. Um i- any action you take on an item could be considered voided if the court um would find that there had been a violation.
Got it.
And and this is another one where individual contacts uh where you may talk with city employees, you may talk with others. Problems about when a commissioner asks a staff member, well, do you know how the other person's going to vote? Do you really need my vote? I don't really want to give you my vote, but it those are the kinds of um conversations that result in the violations. And so we need to avoid any types of questions like that of how is somebody else feeling about the issue and how or how is someone going to vote on the issue?
Uh if you're seeking um not an opinion, but re- really data uh on a project and I know I've asked Jennifer um quite, I've sent her questions uh in advance or otherwise in preparation for a meeting. Um can she send that back to me only or um? Can she broadcast it to all the commissioners? So we all have the same information and is that a violation?
There are two ways that we typically handle that. If it's just specific questions that one commissioner's asked um that we may not find had broader application, we may just provide the response to you. But quite often, we will provide a written response and attach that to the agenda so that it then becomes part of the agenda and everyone has seen it, including the public.
Okay. Okay.
This this was another case um where a school board posed to meet confidentially without the public knowing to discuss curriculum and materials. And the school board's opinion was that because they did not reach a decision or they claimed they were not having any discussion, but they did not violate the Brown Act, the court did not agree. It held that it's not necessary that collective agreement or commitment occurred a deliberative gathering to bring it within the meeting concept. The fact that they were meeting to gather ideas and facts uh uh actually constituted a meeting and therefore they did violate the Brown Act. And in that instance, they the um the court did re- did void the action that they eventually took because of the the meeting held without the public notice. So switch gears a little bit about attendance at council meetings. Um the majority of the of the commission may attend a public meeting of another body or another body of a, I'm sorry, a legislative body of another local agency. And this is what I was referring to is that you cannot discuss amongst yourselves other than as part of the scheduled meeting, any of the uh specific nature of the action to be taken. So nothing in the Brown Act prevents you from attending another meeting. Generally required to attend meetings in person, the Brown Act does allow for teleconference meetings. And a teleconference meeting is where you're attending from a remote location, which I think we are all now very familiar with. At least a quorum of the members of the body must participate from locations that are within the boundaries of which the body exercises jurisdiction. So for example, if somebody's at a conference out of town, that is fine because the the rest of the commissioners would be here. Votes taken during a teleconference meeting must be conducted by roll call. And this is what we were discussing earlier. If you're attending via a teleconference location, we must post an agenda at each location and each teleconference location must be listed in the notice and the agenda. Each teleconference location must be open and fully accessible to the public. And members of the public must be able to hear the meeting and testify from each location. So this means that if you're using your home to participate in the meeting, you will post the agenda at your home. Your home address will be listed on the agenda and you must be allowed the public to participate from that location.
Well, Cynthia, if
Yes.
That's I'm at I I'm at a work conference in San Diego tonight, just an example. And so I'm gonna call in from a hotel room. How does that work?
Yes, you would post your your hotel room. And you would have to allow people to attend if they chose.
In San Diego?
Yes.
If they so choose.
Yes.
Okay. And they can come to my hotel room.
Yes. Does that real go away? Right, and that that that's it has laws that currently exist right now.
Knock up that minibar, Paul. Let's knock up the minibar.
So um during the pandemic, we had some special rules that that came about. Um the California Emergency Services, the act already authorizes the governor to proclaim the state of emergency and which he did. And he also issued an executive order that suspended the Brown Act requirements to allow for teleconferencing during the pandemic without requiring um the noticing and opening to the public. And then a bill was passed that further suspended the Brown Act during a declared state of emergency. So as long as the city council was finding that we still had an emergency and that we were all meeting remotely, these rules applied. And so some jurisdictions are in fact still in this this situation where we do not have to post, they can participate remotely and allow public participation remotely. But once we've just um no longer had that state of emergency, then the rules that I just spoke about come back into effect. So these are the the new rules that I wanted to talk about, which is really the main um reason I'm discussing this topic this evening. Um so starting January first, there's a a new process for members to attend public meetings remotely without identifying the teleconference site on the agency's agenda. A quorum of the legislative body must participate in person from a single physical location within the jurisdiction open to the public. So the new law is not going to allow us all to participate remotely. A majority of you or quorum of you must still be here. And it and it's only allowed in certain situations, um which is just cause and emergency circumstances, which I'm going to talk about. So just cause is defined um childcare, caregiving, child parent, grandparent, grandchild, requires a a member to participate remotely. You know, contagious illness that prevents you from being here in person. So if you're contagious, but you're well enough to attend the meeting, you will be allowed to do so from a remote location. You need to um a need related to a physical or mental disability or travel while on business of the legislative body.
But also travel if I'm on business, just business, right?
Um I think it's only if you're on travel while on business for the agency. So like if you're at a conference.
So if you're traveling for, if Paul is traveling for business, you can't, then I assume.
Right, so
Right, because that that does not meet the definition of that cause, you would still have to follow the other
Okay.
process. So in order to participate remotely under this just cause provision, you must notify the commission at the earliest possibility, possible opportunity. But you need to um participate remotely. And you may only do so up to two meetings per calendar year under the just cause provisions. The second circumstance in which you may participate remotely is the emergency circumstances. Um and this is defined as a physical friendly medical emergency that prevents a member from attending in person. Are diff- slightly different requirements for this. Uh you must request at the um the commission allow you to participate remotely and the commission will need to take action to approve the request. And you need to provide that notice or that request as soon as possible.
Cynthia?
Mm-hmm.
Can we jump back to a quorum? Um can we clarify if an in-person quorum is necessary or just the majority?
I think it's a quorum. Um the body must participate in person from a single, so quorum needs to be here. And so you uh it will, the commission will take action on the request under the emergency circumstances provisions as soon as possible. The general description of the circumstances relating to the commissioner's need to appear remotely must be provided. You do not have to disclose any personal information, give us any details. Um disclose any personal medical issues. We must give enough information. Um the law states doesn't need to be more than twenty year, twenty words. And this is limited to no more than three consecutive months or twenty percent of the regular meetings. There's several additional rules. If we are doing um teleconferencing, we must provide a way for the public to participate that way as well. Uh we must provide notice of how the public can access the meeting and offer comments. Um you must provide the information about how to participate remotely. And we cannot require comments to be submitted ahead of time. We must allow real-time comments during the meeting. If there's any disruption in the broadcast, we have to stop until it's resolved. Must provide a reasonable accommodations.
Are you are you obligated to broadcast your meeting?
If you're um having teleconference participation, yes.
If you don't have teleconference participation, are we obligated to broadcast?
If you're if you're not having anyone participate via teleconference, no.
No.
It's something the city has chosen to do to um allow for the public participation.
Right, but it's not mandated. It's just a choice.
Correct.
Okay.
Um one interesting new um requirement is that you must publicly disclose at the meeting before any action is taken if there's anyone else in your room that's over the age of eighteen at their remote location and the general nature of the members' relationship with the individual. And then this is what we're talking about, the enforcement and consequences. Um but we'll give you a notice and opportunity to cure. So if they've notified someone, if the state district attorney has said, we think you violated the Brown Act, we're going to prosecute you. Um unless you take the opportunity to cure, we may want to come back, notice it, take another vote and and cure it that way. Another action for invalidation of the actions. I've mentioned a couple of cases where the courts have set aside actions that were taken by the legislative bodies. The city would be required to pay attorney fees and costs and in the most extreme circumstances, there's criminal prosecution. Um and that's usually they've which I mean that you did it with the intent to deprive the public of the information. And that's it. Any other questions?
Okay, good. Thank you.
Just you? I'm sorry, I missed that.
The one for um you must disclose if anyone over the age of eighteen is in the room with you when you're at a remote teleconference location. And I'm not sure the reason behind that, but I found that was an interesting new addition to the law.
Yeah, at first I thought it meant under eighteen, but then it said over eighteen. It's like, yeah.
I guess if members of the public go in the room with you, you need to say.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You disclose your real age, Jen, that's what it really is.
Now, the one other thing that I guess I've learned over the years is make sure an applicant, if you are meeting with an applicant or any member of the public doesn't tell you anything about what another commissioner's opinion is. Right? So if they start to mention the wall, somebody said such and or a commissioner said such and you don't want to hear that. Right? Because you don't really understand how many people that person may be chaining together.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're ready to move to director's report.
I do not have much to report this evening. This is our last meeting for two thousand and twenty-two. Can you believe it? After another year. Um uh we will have, we do have a meeting scheduled um the second week of January. As of right now, we do not have any items for that meeting, so we will let you know um as soon as we can whether or not we will be canceling that meeting. Um City Hall will be closing effective um December twenty-third and will reopen on January third. Um in regards to training opportunities, I forwarded the announcement for the planning commissioners academy um that is happening in March in Southern California. So think about those dates. Let me know if you're interested. We will make those arrangements should you want to attend. Um it it's changed a little bit from the days when it was more of a conference, but it's still very effective training for anyone who's interested. I know some of you have attended in the past, so. Um other than that, I don't think I have a lot. Tomorrow night, we do have the um uh induction of our new council members um tomorrow night and uh goodbye to the rest of them um who are leaving us and that will happen here at seven P M. Um the food and drink will be available right refreshments and cake. So everyone's welcome. And I don't think there's anything more. This is the city manager, Ed Romero. Is any other topics? Nope, that is it.
Okay, with that, I will uh adjourn adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Good.
Thank you all.
Happy holidays.
Yeah.